All right, thank you everybody for being here. We're gonna call the June 9th, 2025 School Board Meeting to order. Can I get a roll call please?
Ms. Daniels Steele.
Here.
Ms. Liskin.
Here.
Ms. Martindale.
Here.
Ms. Peterson.
Here.
Uh, here. Moving on now to adoption of the agenda. It's recommend for the Education, adopt the agenda for the June 9th, 2025 regular school board meeting. I've got a motion to adopt the agenda. Thank you, Ms. Martindale. Can I get a second?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Any additions or corrections? See none. Roll call please.
Ms. Martindale. Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Daniels Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskin.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Uh, yes. Moving on now, it's approval of amendments from the May 19th, 2025 School Board Meeting. I'd like to get those approved. Can I get a motion to approve those? Thank you, Ms. Martindale. Second?
Second, Daniels Steele.
Thank you very much, Daniels Steele. Um, any corrections to that? See none. Roll call.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. Daniels Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Liskin.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Uh, yes. All right, now we will honor our retirees. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, President Bosso, Vice President Angela Steele, Mr. Banks, Mr. Garci, rest in peace, and the board. Thank you for having us this evening to recognize our retirees. Just that everybody knows, these are retirees who are here this evening who came because they RSVP'd back to us to make sure we had a slide for them to show them off tonight. But we also had, we have thirty-nine classified retirees this year. We had forty-three certificated retirees and five ungeschated retirees this school year. So as we navigate the changing with NSKRS and things, I think those are pretty crazy numbers, but excited and happy for all those who had this opportunity to retire and move on with their lives. Uh, we're gonna start tonight, uh, and what we're gonna do is we'll introduce the retiree, have a little thing to say about them. They'll come across, shake all your hands if you'd like us to come up front. We'll hand them a little award here, have the picture taken. Yeah, and then they're gonna try and possibly exit in front of us. Try to help them out as they go through this, please. All right. So first up this evening is Carolyn Stuhler. Carolyn is retiring on June 30th after serving the district for twenty-five years. She began her career at Westland High School as a cook and later became an aide at Styles Elementary School. She then moved on to transportation where she was a special needs bus aide. Next she served the staff and students as an ERCA aide at Alton Hall, Finland Elementary, and finished her career in the same one at Hayes Intermediate. Next up is J.D. Johnson. J.D. Johnson will be retired as of July after serving the district for thirty-four years. He began his career as a long-term substitute teacher for Styles Elementary School. He was then hired as a full-time art teacher at Alton Hall Elementary and then Finland Elementary and Pleasantview Middle. In 2006, he took on the position of assistant principal at Franklin Woods Intermediate, following Park Street Intermediate, and is finishing out his career as assistant principal for Gallery Ridge Intermediate. J.D. Johnson. I tried to catch everybody as they walked in. I don't know if I saw Mary Fur walk in tonight, but I'm gonna announce her anyhow. Mary Fur is retiring on June 30th, 2025 after serving the district for twenty-seven and a half years. She began her career with Head Start where she was home visitor class assistant. She then moved on to Monterey Elementary as kindergarten aide and later was a one-on-one aide at both Richard Avenue and Park Street Intermediate. She continued in her career as a cross-territorial aid at both Central Crossing High School and Franklin Heights, and she's retiring from Central Crossing as an ERCA aide. Mary Fur. I know she's not here. Marion Lawless. Marion is retiring July 31st this year. She was hired at Beulah Park Middle School, now Brook Park, as a social-- sorry, she was hired at Brook Park Middle School, which is now Beulah Park, as social studies teacher in nineteen ninety-two, where she had remained her entire thirty-three-year career. Next up is Marlon Boster. Marlon is retiring from Prairie Norton Elementary on June 30th. He began his thirty-four-year career in nineteen ninety-one as been serving the first grade families at Prairie Norton Elementary the entire time. Next up is Tammy Alexander. Tammy began her career in nineteen ninety-five as a bus driver. From then until 2001, she drove a bus from Franklin Heights, Finland Middle School, West Franklin Elementary, Grove City High School, Park Street, uh, Monterey, and J.C. Summer. In 2001, she moved to position as a special education classroom aide at Old Crossing Intermediate and eventually Central Crossing High School. From 2008 to 2025, she served as custodian at Gallery Ridge, um, Highland Park, Franklin Heights where she met me, J.C. Summer, so forth and so on. She ended her career at J.C. Summer this year. Congratulations, Tammy. Kathleen Castro. Kathleen retired on April 30th this past year after serving the district for twenty-eight years. She has worked in the Grove City High School kitchen as a cook and headed her career at Jackson Middle School. Congratulations, Kathleen. Next up is William Rogers. William is retiring on June 30th. He's retiring from transportation. He has had an unwavering commitment to students, staff, and families as a bus driver in the transportation department for the past sixteen years. We're congratulating him tonight. Thank you. Susan Mauren Hogan. Susan has been working for Southwest City Schools since 2003. She started at Finland Middle School as a cook and eventually was promoted to head cook. She's finishing out her twenty-year career at Prairie Norton Elementary. Congratulations, Susan. Don Wallace. Don is retiring after serving the district in many capacities for over thirty-four years. She was hired in nineteen ninety-one as a substitute teacher and after three years was hired full-time at Norton Middle School where she remained for twenty-eight years. In 2022, she moved to Gallery Ridge Intermediate where she is retiring. During her tenure, she coached volleyball, track, and field, and was a cheerleading advisor at Norton Middle School, as well as working at the high school rec centers and coaching distance running at Grove City High School. She offered Saturday School, home instruction, and after-school detention for many years. Congratulations, Don. Diana Rabetta. Diana was hired on August 31st, nineteen ninety-five as a bus driver. She has served in that position for over thirty years and will be enjoying her well-earned retirement starting on June 30th. She's one of the first employees in the family that came back. Congratulations, Diana. Next up is Scott Townley. Coach Townley, as many of us know, he was retiring on June 30th, 2025, was serving the district for twenty-nine years, and has taught in total of thirty-five years. Scott started his career as an itinerant special education teacher in preschool. He then moved to kindergarten at Finland Elementary and eventually taught math, seventh and eighth graders at Jackson Middle School. He has also enjoyed being a basketball coach and track coach at Jackson Middle School for many, many years. Thank you, Scott. Next up, Karen Lutz. Karen is retiring on September 1st, 2025, after serving the district for thirteen years. She began her career at Westland High School in 2011 as a record secretary. In 2012, she became a preschool aide. She's been an aide in different capacities of Richard Avenue, Highland Park, Franklin Heights, Harmon Elementary, Bolt Crossing, Park Street, and Alton Hall. Karen, congratulations. Lisa Oney. Lisa began with Southwestern as a substitute and stayed in that for three years until she was hired as a full-time teacher in nineteen ninety-four. Teacher career started at Darby Elementary with fourth graders. She then moved to Alton Elementary, excuse me, Alton Hall Elementary where she taught first and fourth graders for twelve years. After that, she taught first grade for two years at West Franklin. She finished her last sixteen years at Perry Garden at Prairie Norton Elementary and will be enjoying her official retirement starting June 30th. Karen Musgrave. I'm gonna take that sorrow, but I'll read it anyhow. Karen retired March 31st this year. She served as a bus aide in transportation since she's been hired on November 22nd, 2002. Karen served the families and students of the district for twenty-two years in the same capacity. This is our last retirement of two this evening that I'm aware of. I think that's how he finishes his presentation with a bang.
Thank you again to all the retirees. So much appreciated. Hopefully a long, happy retirement for everybody. Um, we're gonna move on to just the board of education stage, retiring if you'd like, but if you'd like to leave, we understand. All right, moving on now. We got a couple presentations to go on with tonight. Um, we did the retirement person now. Now we're gonna go with the Board of Education Goals Update, Facilities First Impression and Safety with Mr. Montague. My guess is not.
Good evening, President Bosso, Vice President Angela Steele, Ms. Liskin, Mrs. Martindale, Mrs. Peterson, Mr. Banks, and Mr. Garci. Tonight, it is my pleasure to provide you with a brief update regarding the board goals set during our board visioning session in February. The presentation tonight is focused on our board goals of safety and facilities enhancement. So we can see that next slide. Okay, so as with anything, when you talk about the scale of our organization, we are the twenty-third largest employer in Franklin County, both public and private. So as we talk about any of the systematic processes we have, we first start with clarity, inconsistency, and calibration across all of our buildings. So creating a secure learning environment is paramount and a focus of our work each and every day. Our robust safety protocols prevent accidents and emergencies while regular drills prepare students and staff for various scenarios. Being prepared enables trained personnel to respond effectively and appropriately to incidents. An proactive safety approach minimizes risk and comprehensive safety plans address diverse threats. The collaboration between our schools, families, law enforcement, and emergency responders is essential to our success in achieving our goal of maintaining the integrity of learning environments, which enhance trust and foster positive relationships that are galvanized throughout the year. Next slide, please. Next slide. Okay, so to this point, I want to just give you an update in terms of our action steps. So we conducted safety audits in collaboration with all our local law enforcement agencies from February to April. Um, we were in the process, uh, for those months, also analyzing trends for the data. Um, and then each of our principal meetings, um, had executive directors discussing safety priorities and protocols during those early April meetings. Uh, SFCs built discussions around the following, which include our current status, what we can improve upon, what can we refine, and then ultimately what can our priorities be for next school year. Uh, we also ran our emergency management tests. So we actually had scenarios this spring that were a scenario of a gas leak, where students and staff would have to evacuate either a site totally to a secondary site, and then all of that had to be uploaded into this Ohio School Safety Center. Um, we also collaborate with Homeland Security. Um, and then continually, we're looking at our threat assessments and working with those teams to make sure that we have all of those protocols, and we also have all of the timelines for the state of uploading those drills that, um, occur throughout the school year with the regular cadence. Next slide. Um, also, I wanted to highlight this. Um, we've made a distinct and important effort this year to make sure that we are up to date with trainings, especially for our folks that serve those support service roles for our students. So here we have a couple of pictures of CPR training that was provided to our bus aides through, um, Ohio Health. Also, um, our Grove City Safety Director, Kevin Tiefer, presented on-driver awareness and reporting of suspicious activities. Um, actually, I want to thank Lieutenant Holtz from in the back, wherever you are. Thank you for your continued partnership with Grove City PD. They continue to set the bar high when we meet with them regularly. And then finally, Gary Sebris, who works, um, obviously with Safeguard Risk Solutions, um, was instrumental in the audits and continuing training and services that we provide throughout the district. Next slide. Okay, um, I don't know why there's a pop-up there, but as we look at next steps, one of the things that we're working on right now is compendium of trainings that can be utilized as instructional videos for not only staff but also students. And this will come out each month as we look at, um, a staff action step timeline that will follow the cadence of the requirements of the Ohio School Safety Center as well as Homeland Security. And then ultimately, we will be spending a large portion of our time in administrative retreat this year to focus on the trainings and then calibration across our buildings, um, as we continue to, uh, refine our emergency management tests. And then we are set in January to have a full-scale tabletop, um, for the district. So that will be part of our work as well. Next slide. Okay, I'm gonna transition to Mr. Detterman now for facilities, conditions, and enhancements.
Good evening. Uh, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to talk about this board goal that in February, which you set on facilities, conditions, and appearances. Um, prior to the summer break, property services has already begun working in many of these areas. Next, please. In this slide, you'll see one of the areas we already started on was the modular units that used to be the Styles Family Resource Center, uh, and removing those old facilities. Uh, part of this work is to have multiple ongoing pieces, and part of that kind of ties into our safety as we talk as well. Uh, but the clearing of the lot right now, we're working on some parking area enhancements for the Styles Family Resource Center, as well as for Styles Elementary, and some safety areas around that facility, uh, some parking gates or speed, uh, drive gates and things like that to help with the traffic flow. Uh, we noticed a lot of people cutting through between the two roads that had nothing to do with school. So we're gonna look and put some safety features in there. Uh, as well as transitioning the playground that was next to the old Styles Family Resource Center is getting transitioned over to a lot next to the facility that was built there to replace it. Next slide, please. The other things, then, property services have been actively scheduling work on appearances around facilities. You'll see an example there in the pictures of some power washing happening at Westland High School, and some of the other activities that are going on, some hanging projects, things like that, as well as an increase in landscaping around all the facilities in the district as an extension. I'm gonna turn it over to Mark for the next slide here, talk about some upcoming projects.
Uh, good evening. So summertime in my department is our time to open up our sleeves and get to work. Um, this summer will be no different. Um, it gives us the opportunity to not only, um, improve our facilities from the year, you know, the year gone by, but also make them better for that next starting, uh, school year. Um, we will begin a parking lot maintenance program on the phase-two elementary buildings. Um, that'll be, uh, you know, a crack filling, uh, seal coat, striping project. Um, that's to maintain those facilities going forward. Um, along with that, we'll be renovating a few playgrounds. Um, East Franklin Elementary School, one of our oldest sites that we still maintain. Uh, we will be retroseeing that playground with some modern equipment, same with some of the older and older equipment at Monterey Elementary School. Um, outside of that, we got some various other projects, some chlorofrees replacements and other things. It's a busy summer for us. Um, as we get into summer and beyond, um, we're getting a little closer to that segment three high school replacement project coming up. And as we get closer to that, that will give us the opportunity to look at our master facilities plan and kind of put together that snapshot, not only helping with those high school projects to grow and flow, but also a snapshot of what's beyond that in the years to come. Thanks.
Do you have any questions or any information we can provide, or we can follow up again with additional information? If there's something we touched upon that you'd like to know a little bit more about?
I have a question. Something we mentioned during, um, our, uh, meeting, we talked about, uh, in terms of safety, and you mentioned some YouTube videos or training videos. Um, we've had a lot of folks, um, substitute teachers, teachers say, you know, what happens if I'm absent, that they have a training, I'm out, or I'm a sub and I haven't had the tornado drill training, that kind of thing. Are we offering these modules? Will they be available for all staff?
That is the goal. So I'm so glad you asked that question because with, again, being such a large employer and the amount of turnover we have, and then also to your point, when we have guests or visitors in our classrooms or in support service roles, the goal is to build a complete compendium of those types of training. So the one that you saw there was the tornado drill. Kate and Evan were out at the Hayes evacuation, uh, drill, and they captured footage, and then we are adding any instructional pieces to that. So essentially, you'll have modules that you can use periodically either as part of the onboarding process, or we need further needed exposure to the drills and what those look like, just like, you know, good instruction. And then the other piece will be, you know, as we continue to build a repository, if layouts change, if classrooms are moved, right? So I'll give you an example with the evacuation drills. You know, five years ago, Bolt Crossing and Bolt Crossing didn't have a Pleasantview Middle School to think about as a secondary evacuation site. So it'll allow us to stay current. It'll allow us to make sure that the facilities, you know, again, when we pull those plans out, are accurate and descriptive so that law enforcement can have quick access, but also that when we have turnover in staff or even just the movement, as we have people that apply for different positions in different buildings, it may look a little different based on your resources and your staffing modules. So the goal would be to have that repository that we can use, and then each month, as we have those requirements, we'll send out those, those videos.
Great. Thank you. I just wanna say thank you. I, um, and that's something we talked about a lot in the last, the last year and a half, and we probably had it against the board visioning session. So it's really great to see an all-coming version. I love these updates from the board visioning session and the updates we're having currently about all these things and, you know, safety, securities, um, first and foremost, when it comes to effective learning environment. So thank you, guys, for all that you're doing and continue to do.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on now for board reports. Any board reports?
Um, I'd like to give one, another one, if Mr. Determan doesn't go too far. I don't know how far you're gonna go, but I'm gonna tap you in on this one. Um, I want to give a little bit of a transportation update. I know transportation's been a big thing. Um, well, with twenty-one thousand students, it is gonna be a huge part of our district. So, um, I know, like myself, many of you, you know, deal with transportation every day, and getting the system damage on the last day of school is kind of a reminder, okay, let's check into this. Let's check into, um, this system and how it's going. Um, I know that this system was put into place, a TransFinder system. You guys partnered with them back in, uh, January 2022, so before all of us were on the board, um, is when the agreement developed. So I've been trying to learn a lot about this system. And, um, you know, it's a system that, um, started out with the amount of about eight-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars, and it's gonna continue at a rate of about a hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand dollars per year since March. So it's a system, you know, to be business responsible. We wanna make sure everything is on the up and up. And, um, so this, Mr. Determan's fine, we're gonna tap you in with the IT and all of the stuff that you guys are doing with the data collection to make sure that we're, um, on target, right? Do you wanna say anything in this part, or I feel like I'm gonna say some words that I don't fully understand, but...
No, it's an ongoing following and tracking company that's providing the service to us and kind of hold them accountable.
Right.
Service that many of our parents have really grown to enjoy to have, just making sure it's consistent and reliable for them.
Yes, and that's one thing that's been great. Last year, the data team instituted a tracking system for occurrences, and so that was great to start that. And so you can kind of see it, of starting the, um, of how many occurrences there are than today and how many they have, and how there's a constant communication between TransFinder and the district and how they can work together to keep the ball rolling and, um, not losing downtime. Because I do know that, um, StopFinder, that is from the TransFinder company, that's the current company, um, it is a handy tool. It is good to know when the bus is coming, when it's not coming, or if your bus number got changed. So I think it's a great service and, um, looking forward to using it in the future and hopefully getting some updates to those things. So thank you, Mr. Determan. But so that's the update for the transportation. We're, you know, hopefully in the summertime, they're gonna do some, looking at the data they collected over the past nine months and hopefully not have any more outages as we go forward. So nothing worse than wanting for buses to get me on time and systems not working. So...
Will we be able to get a report of those occurrences and...
To see the report? I didn't ask to see the report, but it would be very...
We've tracked, our data team in IT has been so helpful, um, in helping us track and elect, um, even to the point the company has assigned additional communications person with us who, uh, over the last couple of weeks was doing a daily call-in to us as a district, check on us, um, because we've used those data points with them as well.
Yes, I knew that was a point I was interested in mentioning. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on. We got a lot of participation related to agenda items, which there is nobody signed up. So we'll move on to student-staff achievement with Mrs. Liskin.
Thank you, President Bosso. Good evening, everyone. Um, underboard of Education, student and staff achievement report for June 2025. Student achievements, we wanna say congratulations to the Grove City High School, NJROTC, who have been awarded the distinguished unit with academic honors award for the seventh year in a row. That deserves a little clap. This month by the Director of the Naval Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps. Also, congratulations to Norton Middle School eighth grader, Jasir Hopkins, who competed in the OHSAA Middle School State Championship last month. To even qualify, athletes must be ranked in the top twenty-four in the entire state of Ohio in each event. Hopkins was the only middle schooler in the district to qualify to compete in this year's championship track meet, competing in the eight-hundred-meter run and placing nineteenth in the state. Congratulations, Jasir. Congratulations to Central Crossing High School students, Josh Ramirez, Hassan Saleh. Congratulations to Central Cross State High School students Josh Ramirez, Hassan Saleh, Micah Roberts, and Kayden Deng for being named a Top Ten National Winning Group in the 2025 Capitol Hill Challenge, a 14-week financial education competition hosted by the SIF MA Foundation and sponsored by the Charles Schwab Foundation. Representing Ohio's 15th Congressional District and Congressman Mike Carey, the team competed against thousands of students nationwide by managing a hypothetical $100,000 investment portfolio. Impressive. As one of the highest performing teams in the country, they have been invited to Washington, DC for a reception at the US Capitol to be recognized for their outstanding achievements. Great job, Mrs. Liskin. And congratulations goes to the Westland High School Air Force JROTC unit for earning the Distinguished Unit with Merit Award for the 2024-2025 school year. This honor places Westland's program among the top 20% of all 828 Air Force JROTC units worldwide. To receive this award, units must meet rigorous national standards, including an average of at least 18 hours of community service per cadet. Westland averaged 19.7 hours, scoring at least 90% on their unit assessment. Westland scored a 100%, and maintaining a minimum enrollment of 100 cadets, which Westland enrolled 119. And successfully meeting all Air Force JROTC headquarters deadlines. This marks the seventh consecutive year the program has earned the Distinguished Unit Award, and the second consecutive eligible year it has achieved the Distinguished Unit with Merit distinction. Southwestern City Schools staff achievements, we want to say a big congratulations to Jackson Mill School oral music teacher, Mrs. Amy Rist, on receiving the Secondary Music Educator of the Year runner-up award by the Columbus Symphony Orchestra at their recipient 2025 Awards Gala. She joins, yes, she joins Darby Woods Elementary School's Kerry Clebedance, who was named the Elementary Music Educator of the Year, which we recognized last month. So great job, Mrs. Rist. And Southwestern City Schools gives back, we just want to say thank you to all of our amazing teachers and staff, yes, all of you in the room. Our parents and family members who helped with all of the end of the year activities, award ceremonies, field days, field trips, all of the wonderful things that you do to make our students' educational experience better. We appreciate you and we thank you for your end of year work. And that's it for me.
Thank you so much. Moving on now, we're going to go for items for action under Fiscal and Operational Management. Mrs. Peterson.
All right, settle in. I got some items. Got a lot of items. All right, bringing forth, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the revised permanent appropriations. You're going to see X1. Item number two, investments and financial statements for May 2025. You're going to see items X2 and X3. It is recommended that in accordance with Section 135.14 of the Ohio Revised Code, the Board of Education approve May investments and cash position report for the month of May 2025 as it was submitted. Item number three is payment of bills, CX4. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve payment of bills according to the list of checks for the month of May 2025. Item number four, donations, CX5. It is, we received a total donation amount of $13,432.53. Again, we continue to express our appreciation to all of our donors who constantly, ongoing, financially donate to Southwestern City Schools. We appreciate you. Item number five, authorization to pay bills in accordance with Section 5705.41 of the Ohio Revised Code. We're going to see X6. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize the treasurer to pay bills for May, which were non-processed in accordance with Section 5705.41 of the Ohio Revised Code. Item number six, apply for the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation Individual Retrospective Rating Program for calendar year 2026. It is recommended that the Board of Education apply for the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation Individual Retrospective Rating Program for the period of January 1st of 2026 to December 31st of 2026 as presented. This is item RCX7. A little background for this one. The district has participated in what's considered a risk-free group retrospective rating program since 2015. Currently, analysis indicates that the district can save money by participating in an individual retrospective rating program with little to no risk. The district participated in an individual retrospective rating program from 2009 through 2014. It saved over a million dollars over that six-year period, okay? Due to the potential savings coupled with minimal risk, the district is applying for an individual retrospective rating plan, okay? Item number seven, agreement with the Franklin County Common Pleas Court. It is recommended that the Board of Education enter into agreement with the Franklin County Common Pleas Court to provide truancy services for the 2025-2026 school year, CX8. Background on this one. In 2016, House Bill 410 was put into place to put some, as we call it, teeth into the laws to help school districts combat truancy, starting with the 2027-2018 school year. Since that time, the district has partnered with Franklin County Common Pleas Court, and they provide truancy officers that work for the county in conjunction with the district. The district receives the services of three truancy officers that work four days a week in the district and then they're one day at the courthouse. The three, these three officers have the connections necessary to provide the appropriate services that is mandated by the House Bill 410. The cost to the district is $94,932 for the three truancy officers, okay? Item number eight, transfer educational equipment to Cypress Christian School. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt the resolution as presented to transfer educational equipment purchased with state auxiliary services funding to the Cypress Christian School. Background on this one. The district has been like the fiscal agent for Cypress Christian School's auxiliary funds, provided by the Ohio Department of Education and workforce for many years. Starting with the 2025-2026 fiscal year, Cypress Christian School was served as its own fiscal agent and received funds from ODEW directly, so that's taken us out. The district currently has a modular classroom that's listed on its fixed asset inventory that was purchased with auxiliary funds provided by ODEW. That's CX9 in its Exhibit A. ODEW has provided the resolution to transfer the remaining asset from the district to Cypress Christian School. So basically, that modular that's under the bus, it's going to go to Cypress. We don't need the modular. It's going to go to them. Item number nine, agreement with the YMCA of Central Ohio. It is recommended that the Board of Education enter into an agreement with the YMCA of Central Ohio to provide an alternative education program at Brook Park Middle School in the amount of $277,688 for the school year 2025-2026, CX10. Here's background for this one, okay? The district has provided a positive alternative for students called PALS, maybe familiar with it, and this has been in place since 2000. The PALS program provides a positive pathway for students in lieu of serving and out of district suspension or being expelled, okay? The program provides 30 seats for this school year, so there's 30 seats. Item number 10, agreement with the YMCA of Central Ohio. It is recommended that the Board of Education enter into an agreement with the YMCA of Central Ohio to provide Head Start programming for the 2025-2026 school year as presented, CX11. Background on this one. The district is a sub-grantee and/or provider to the YMCA of Central Ohio for our Head Start program. The federal Head Start program tries to restrict the number of grants it awards throughout the country. Due to the size of the district's Head Start program, we are required to go through a grantee such as the YMCA of Central Ohio to provide our Head Start program. It would be much easier to run our own program under our own grant. However, at this time, it is not an option for the district to become a direct grant recipient of Head Start funding. So we will go this route, but we have Head Start. Item number 11, approval of the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget Southwest Public Libraries. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the 2025-2026 budget for the Southwest Public Libraries as presented, CX8. The background for this one. The district is the taxing authority for Southwest Public Libraries. As the taxing authority, the district acts as a fiduciary and approves various items for the library. The following items that we approve, like the annual budgets, requests for property tax issues, appointment of board members. Historically, the district has approved the recommendations of the Southwest Public Libraries as provided. Item 12, approval of payment in lieu of transportation. You will remember this one from last month's meeting. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the payment in lieu of transportation listed for the 2024-2025 school year as presented, CX13. According to Section 3227.01 of the Ohio Revised Code, the average cost of transportation per child in the state of Ohio for the 2024-2025 school year has been determined by the State Department of Education in the amount of $583.86. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the payment in lieu of transportation to those residents who have applied and been approved for the reimbursement. The background on this one, as I stated before, the district approved the list of individuals receiving the payment in lieu for transportation for the 2024-2025 school year at the May 19th, 2025, for reading. We're bringing it forth again. On the list as presented, it represents three students who were omitted from the original list, okay? So that's why you're hearing this again. We're bringing it forth for the recommendation, so it will approve payment for those three students we realized that were omitted from the original list. Item 13 for transfers. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the transfers from the general fund to various funds as presented. The transfers are necessary to fund fee waivers to buildings, school lunch debts, and replacement, CX14. Background for this one. The district is required by law to provide fee waivers to all students that receive free or reduced lunches. School lunch debts are required to be removed from the food service fund each year. The district continues with the collection process until the attempt to collect the bad debts. School districts in that area used to receive additional dollars from Coca-Cola to fund extracurricular activities. These funds are no longer provided by Coca-Cola, but we are still needing these funds in these various programs. The proceeds from all soda vending machines are now placed in the general fund to help offset this transfer, okay? Item number 14, came down to the last one. Establish change funds. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the distribution of change funds for fiscal year 2025-2026 as presented, CX15. Background for this one. The treasurer's office establishes change funds to provide the ability for schools to receive cash for items in the following areas. You have your school stores, student activities, athletics, food services, that means breakfast, lunch programs. These funds are returned at the end of each school year, so cash is not in the building over the summer. This is an annual transaction of collecting all the funds at the end of the school year and replenishing them when the new school year opens up. I call this back in the PTA day, you start up cash and you close up cash, you make a balance. After reviewing this report with Hugh, I move it forward for passage.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a second, please?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call, please? Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Angela Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Liskin.
Yes.
Ms. Markdale. Mr. Bosa. Yes, moving on now for items for action under curriculum with Mrs. Liskin.
Thank you, Dr. Bosa. I just wanted to add one little thing if I could, under the PALS program, I know that you mentioned there's 30 seats in the room. This year, we had 120 students that participated in the PALS program, and just to note, what an amazing job they're doing with that program. I'm very impressed at the report that was put out at the end of the year. I don't know if anybody had a chance to read that yet. Dr. Lusher shared that, and I just wanted, something that struck me, that I wanted to mention, 70 out of 120 students identified as victims of the Crime Act, and that's 58% of the folks, the kiddos that go to that program, that have participated in that program. So I think that this is something that we should keep in mind when we're talking about supporting all of our students and how proud we do provide this program and they're doing great things over there. So I just wanted to mention that before we move on. Moving on, under curriculum, I turn my page here. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the second and final reading of the math materials adoption for grades seven through 12 as attached, and after reviewing this, I move it for approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Liskin. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson.
Can I just say, on that one, Dr. Bowger and Ms. Weber did another amazing job, and that material is really cool to look at. I even brought one of my kids with me to go through it, like, hey, you're in it, what are we looking for? And he said he got to pilot some of the programs even, and he had a great conversation with Ms. Weber also about what he's using and how he's doing it, and just kudos to you guys and your team, because it's every, every two, every three years, these things are turned on, so you guys are constantly redoing a set of curriculums. these sessions, you guys are constantly redoing a set of curriculum in the math department. So it's pretty cool what they put into it. And I did recognize the tray one and the calculus books and everything, that were still based on the same ones we used many, many moons ago. So that was pretty cool with that curriculum, so thank you guys for all you do with that.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call, please? Ms. Liskin.
Yes.
Ms. Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Markdale. Ms. Hiersen.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes, moving back to Miss Liskin with items for action under schools, thank you.
Thank you. This evening, under students, school, and community, we have five action items. The first one is Central Crossing High School Boys varsity basketball team to travel to Ashland. They have the opportunity to attend a basketball team camp at Ashland University. The trip is planned for June sixteenth and seventeenth of twenty twenty-five, and of course, they'll miss zero days of school. Trip expenses will be paid for by boosters, their basketball booster account. Number two is Central Crossing High School Financial Algebra. The Financial Algebra Stock Market Team has the opportunity to celebrate their tenth-place finish in the National Stock Market Game and be recognized in Washington, DC. The trip is planned for June tenth through twelfth of twenty twenty-five, and they will miss zero days of classes. And the trip expenses will be paid by the SIF Foundation. And I'm just wondering if they give any, you know, tips on stock market and can we recruit them? Number three is Central Crossing High School Football Team. The student athletes have the opportunity to travel to Ohio Wesleyan University in Delaware, Ohio for football camp. The trip is planned for July twentieth through twenty-second of twenty twenty-five. Students will miss zero days of school. Trip expenses will be paid by the students, parents, and boosters. Number four is the request for modifications to the approved out-of-state overnight trip. On February tenth of twenty twenty-five, the Board of Education approved a trip request for Franklin Heights High School marching band to travel to the University of Ryoberne July twenty-seventh through August first, twenty twenty-five. And it is requested that the trip location be changed to Meskingum University in New Concord, Ohio, and the dates will remain the same. And number five, Westland High School Boys Basketball. The student athletes have the opportunity to participate in the Summer Basketball College Team Camp in Lexington, Kentucky. The trip is planned for June twenty-first and twenty-second of twenty twenty-five. Students will miss zero days of school, and trip expenses will be paid for by boosters. After reviewing these items, I move them for approval.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second, please?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Roll call. Ms. Liskin.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Markdale.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes, moving on to items for action under personnel with Mrs. Markendale.
Thank you, President Bosso. All right, so for tonight's meeting, we have eight personnel items involving two hundred and twenty people. This includes twenty-seven certified and/or administrative resignations, four administrative employment, seven certified changes in employment, a hundred and twenty-three certified employments, sixty-two of which are supplemental. We have eight classified resignations, two classified changes in employment, forty-five classified employments, and four retiree hire for public notice. Then I also want to mention that there will be a drive-in hire event for transportation on June twenty-fourth from ten AM to two PM at the Transportation ECO. So please watch out for more information on that, it will be on social media. And that is all I have.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second on that, please?
Second, Liskin.
Thank you, Mrs. Liskin. Roll call, please. Ms. Markdale.
Yes.
Ms. Liskin.
Yes.
Ms. Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes. Before we move on, we're going to bring Matt Jordan up to introduce some of our new personnel coming on here at Southwest City Schools.
It's like prying the red seat. All right, so to like to introduce three of our new administrators to everybody that's here this evening. First up is Mrs. Tara Thompson, our new principal of Grove City High School. Mrs. Thompson comes to us from Allentangie Local Schools, where she has served as the assistant principal of Berlin High School since twenty twenty-three. Before joining Allentangie Local Schools, she served as associate principal of curriculum, as principal of the Future Business Leaders Academy at CK King High School down in Houston, Texas. Mrs. Thompson brings with her a wealth of curricular knowledge using qualitative and quantitative data to drive instructional practices to benefit staff and students. Her enthusiasm, positive outlook on life, incredible work ethic, and dynamic leadership ability really stood out in the process. In her years of admin experience, she has demonstrated that she has resolved champion of student successes in and out of the classroom. And again, this may in her stand out as a candidate for Grove City. She holds a Bachelor of Science in Middle Childhood Education with Love University, and a Master of Curriculum Construction from the University of Houston. Mrs. Tara Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. I am honored to be the next principal at Grove City High School. I am excited to join a community that values their students and takes great pride in traditions at Grove City. I'm looking forward to strengthening what makes it great. And, you know, all the accelerating successes along the way. I'm getting this smile right here, so, thank you.
Thank you.
She can't, Rose is in color red.
Next up, I'm excited to introduce Mr. Zach Durbin as our new assistant principal of Franklin Heights High School. Mr. Durbin comes to us from within the district, where he currently serves as an intervention specialist on Westland High School. He's also worked as a custodian and intervention specialist with the Madison Plains Local School District, and in the United States Army where he held the rank of Staff Sergeant working as a standardized flight instructor. He holds a Bachelor of Science in Flight Management for Franklin University, Bachelor of Arts in Special Education from Western Governors University, and Master of Science in Leadership Leadership from Western Governors University. With extensive experience in special education, department, and TBT leadership, as well as leadership and instructional service in the US Army, Mr. Durbin brings a wealth of knowledge and expertise to Franklin Heights. His background, combined with his strong commitment to continuous growth and his deep roots in our system, make him a viable asset. We are confident that you will find Mr. Durbin to be a dedicated partner and tremendous resource in supporting our Golden Falcon community. Mr. Durbin.
Just like to say thank you to the Board of Education, Mr. Banks, Jordan, his office, and a big thanks to the Westland staff and administration for everything they've provided for the last six years of working for Burden Outstanding District. Zero regrets moving into Southwest City Schools and look forward to being part of the Falcon family and the continued success in that school. Thank you.
And tonight, I'd like to welcome Ms. Allison Holmes, our new assistant principal of Beulah Park Middle School. Ms. Holmes comes to us from Dehanna Jefferson Public Schools, where she has taught varying levels of middle grade mathematics since two thousand and two. Prior to, I know it's mad, like. Prior to that, she taught seventh grade math, algebra, and pre-algebra at Leaky Heights and Clark County Schools in Las Vegas, Nevada. Ms. Holmes holds a Bachelor of Science in Human Ecology from the Ohio State University, and two Master's degrees in Middle Childhood Education and School Leadership also from the Ohio State University. With extensive experience in middle grades instruction, we are confident Ms. Holmes is the right administrative leader alongside Dr. Clark at Beulah Park Middle School this fall. In particular, it is a culmination of Ms. Holmes' extensive instructional experiences and robust involvement, working with student clubs and athletics, that leads us to believe she will be welcome in addition to our team. We are excited to see the positive impact it also will bring to Beulah Park this fall. Welcome, Ms. Holmes.
Thank you for having me. I am so excited. This is just a perfect fit. I don't know if there's something, but I feel like it's a perfect fit. I'm a first-year graduate, so I'm back home here after being in Las Vegas for a while, teaching up there. And I'm just so excited to help with what's going on there and just continue the success of Beulah Park. Thank you.
All right, moving on now to public participation with non-agenda items. We're going to start out first with Chelsea Alchire. Chelsea.
Hi, good evening, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Chelsea Alchire, and I come to you not only as a dedicated educator, but as someone with deep lived experience in the work we're here to strengthen. For the past thirteen years, I've worked in ESL and special education, beginning as a bilingual aide, then as an instructional assistant in a special needs classroom, and for the last ten years, nine of which in the district as an ESL teacher. This work is my calling. I've been honored to be nominated for the twenty twenty-six Ohio Teacher of the Year, and I've also been a speaker of the Ohio TESL Conference, where we gather to learn, reflect, and grow as advocates for multilingual learners across the state. With that background, I want to say how much I appreciate it is the board prioritizing professional development that includes diverse organizations. I want to especially thank Board President Bosso for recognizing Mr. Ed Kennedy at the last meeting and the remarkable work he's done leading the ESL department here at Southwest City Schools. Mr. Kennedy's leadership, compassion, and vision have made an immeasurable impact on both students and educators in our district. His recognition at the last meeting is well-deserved and deeply appreciated. But as you continue exploring partnerships for professional development for the Board of Education, I would like to recommend a few local and national organizations that provide high-impact culturally responsive training. A few local organizations that would be great for the board to strengthen some of their not-so-strong areas include ETSS, Ethiopian Tabwahito Social Services, which offers trauma-informed, culturally-grounded training for educators working with immigrant and refugee youth. And as a side note about this organization, I had an ESL student at Finlin Middle School in my eighth-grade class in two thousand and seventeen who recently graduated from Otterby University, who now works for ETSS. The Ohio Center for Autism and Low Incidence is a leader in inclusive education for students with disabilities, offering practical and adaptable strategies. CRIS, or Community Refugee and Immigration Services, provides school-based support and training focused on refugee and immigrant experiences, mental health, and educational access. And the Curwen Institute at OSU is renowned for research-driven equity training centered on race, opportunity, and systemic barriers. A couple of national organizations you could look into are the National Coalition on School Diversity, which advocates for school integration and educational equity and offers professional development on culturally responsive teaching and systemic equity. The TESL International Association, which is a global leader in advancing the expertise of educators in English language teaching. They offer professional development, best practices, and advocacy. And the Council for Exceptional Children. It focuses on improving outcomes for students with disability and gifts and talent through special education training and support. Partnering with these organizations would not only support our educators, it would directly impact the experiences and outcomes of our students, especially those who are multilingual, disabled, recently arrived, or historically underserved. This work, making our school more equitable, more inclusive, and more human, matters. It requires more than a one-time training. It takes sustained investment in our students, open minds, and a willingness to see every student in their full community. So again, thank you for acknowledging the leaders among us, for speaking out the right voices, and for making it clear that we are moving forward with purpose. I truly hope you all look into some of these organizations and associations and find at minimum one or two that align with the beliefs, the stakeholder views, and the perception of our importance.
Good evening, members of the board, and Mr. Banks, and thank you for the listening and the listening. Say the best of words. First, I wanted to say and recognize, have you cried one to those who celebrate? And I would love to speak on transparency. It seems as though this board does not understand what the word transparency means, despite most of you having run on that as part of your platform. So the definition of transparency in the context of business or governance refers to being open and honest, and also promotes accountability. Before I get into, so examples of the lack of transparency, I also just want to say, you notice I have a red shirt on? There are a lot of us who have red shirts on that are not part of SWIA. I feel like SWIA and the teachers have been being blamed for actions that parents are doing in the community. And so I just want to put everyone on notice right now that that's not SWIA, and it's not teachers. It's us. It's me. You can blame me. But there's, someone keeps putting anonymous posts blaming SWIA on Facebook, and I think that that's a really bad look for the board. I raised Omar Turazi in the first place, and then pretending like it was about a personnel issue was not transparent. Denise Steele already admitted on the record during a meeting in July of twenty twenty-four that when you voted to give Turazi a contract, she had already reached out to him before she was even sworn in as a board member. You didn't have multiple attorneys to select from, you didn't share their qualifications, you didn't have a public discussion, you didn't even follow proper parliamentary procedure. When we have repeatedly asked, what is Turazi doing to earn nine thousand dollars a month? We are told he is advising. When we request records of what he bills for, they look like this. They are entirely redacted. Unethical. And then in July, you decided to give him a year-long contract at a rate of nine thousand dollars per month, so he no longer has to provide invoices. When Turazi's one-year contract expired in December of twenty twenty-four, the board just quietly rolled it into twenty twenty-five. You didn't have any other discussion, you didn't vote, you didn't have transparency. And there's no possible way that you didn't violate Sunshine laws by making that decision, because at least three of you would have had to have discussed it ahead of time. This is unethical and possibly illegal. But Turazi's still here, maybe not today, I don't know, is he earning a speech today? He's still here, and according to the district expenditures, he's still being paid nine thousand a month. You also left the Vouchers for Ohio lawsuit meant to recruit money for public schools that is being diverted to private schools through vouchers. No vote, no public participation, no public discussion, no transparency. Same thing happened when you decided to leave the OSBA, Ohio School Board Association. We noticed it, we held you accountable, and then you rejoined. That's forced transparency. Omar Turazi and members of the Board of Education are using attorney-client privilege as a shield to conduct public business outside of the scope of Ohio's Sunshine laws. That could be a violation, likely a violation, of the Open Meetings Act or the Public Records Act. In Ohio, attorney-client privilege does not, does allow some confidentiality between a public board and its attorney. However, it cannot be used to conduct regular board business in secret, and it does not apply if the communication is not truly legal advice, as in if it's strategic or political in nature, it doesn't apply. While truly privileged communications can be withheld, general district business or discussions involving board action may not be privileged. Serial one-on-one communications, sometimes called daisy chaining, like for example, if Omar calls all of you individually before a board meeting to talk to you about what's going to be happening in that board meeting, that's called daisy chaining, and that's violation of Sunshine laws. Sort of like if a certain lawyer calls each school board member right before the meeting. Use of an attorney as a buffer to give legal cover to deliberation, as like perhaps Mr. Turazi takes a position. As like perhaps Mr. Turazi takes a position to, let's say Ms. DeAngelo Steele, and then maybe to Ms. Martindale, or Ms. Peterson, and then maybe to Mr. Fosa. Also, violation of Sunshine laws. Until you actually start practicing transparency, we will be here to watch, and we will hold you accountable.
This room is a lot of noise in this area in this room today. It's so conveniently with our school board president said out loud last month, and then our vice president conveniently had to deal with that to put the writing on a petition that a student in our district put out there because he felt threatened by your actions to join an association that promotes segregation, not only of students with disabilities, but also English language learners. And if any of you, the majority of you sitting up there, continue to believe that a diversity of opinions coming from those associations is appropriate, you're more out of touch than you realize. If the majority of you. The noise and hysteria that you think we are causing is going to cause us to lose a levy, and it's not because of your own board decisions, your lack of transparency, and your lack of ability to actually answer questions from any stakeholder in this room, you're delusional. After sitting through this absolute bitching session, I heard a majority of you say, you want similar outcomes from every school, you want equity. You want more opportunities for students with disabilities as they age in our district. You want inclusion. You want different perspectives from organizations that promote private and charter schools, along with an experienced attorney who has no educational experience. I know I beat that with a, you know, but it is here. You want diversity, you want DEI, but you want it your way, that fits your conservative values, that you so conveniently outlined in your superintendent wish list. Forty-eight percent of this district is not white, and at any given time, there are eighty-plus languages spoken within the walls of our schools. When a parent asked our school board president at a meeting he attended, she said, what are we doing to hire more care, direct care staff that don't just speak English? The question was not answered. When asking our school board members what initiatives we're taking to hire a more diverse population of teachers, because representation matters. I would connect with the counterquestion of are we hiring them because they're qualified, or are we hiring them because they're black? I would specify black versus white. What I said was diverse. Each of you approved the hire of new staff and employees. Do you not realize that each position has a certain set of qualifications to meet to even be considered for an interview? All of which are district, state, or union requirements are a combination of all of them. You must be qualified in order to be considered. We could say that our district attorney did not have to face the same scrutiny in order to hire. Our policy committee, who nicely omitted stakeholders as parents to be a part of that committee, opted to eliminate our legislative representative policy because it will dedicate all of our board members the opportunity to be legislative rep instead of just one of you. Thank you, Dr. Luxer, for explaining that when our own vice president couldn't. I would, however, like to point out that with this board, whose most recent decision to join these different school board associations or advisory organizations that do not prioritize free, quality, public education for all students, we cannot trust that you are acting in the best interest of this district. Who's holding you accountable? It certainly can't be us when we're here in this room that you never answer questions in. Who is advising you on what to say to whom? Oh, that's right, Turazi is the person that stands to benefit from this district's failure because his family owns and operates at least one charter school in North Columbus. The bigger the hole this district gets him, the more money he stands to gain. Most of this boils down to ethics, morals, and last but certainly not least, transparency. It seems that for the majority of this board, segregation, lack of representation, and your conservative values are at the forefront of your decision to make some progress. If you would like to stay otherwise, now, in this meeting, you can. The board discussion point of our agenda would be the perfect and appropriate time, especially considering for our virtual board, to do it. So go ahead and put it on record without plan, your motivation. We've all been waiting weeks for these answers. Maybe that will eliminate all of this noise and hysteria.
Hello, I'm Kate Huggie, and this is, oh, for me. I am quite literally standing here tonight because the teachers of this district saved my life. I attended Southwest City Schools for thirteen years, and in some of my toughest teenage moments, I was met with teachers who cared. Lately, I've started seeing references to bad actor teachers, selfish teachers, greedy teachers, and that silences me because my experience could not have been more different. Blaming teachers whenever something goes wrong in education is not new. But this rhetoric hurts not just them, it hurts our kids. We've been hearing cries of indoctrination for years, without a shred of evidence, let any proof, let alone any proof that this is widespread across public education. These claims often relate to cultural war issues among adults like gender identity, something that's not even mentioned in our district's curriculum. I've heard teachers joke, if we could indoctrinate anything into them, it would be the importance of wearing deodorant and coming to class on time. The truth is, a teacher is meant to be a safe person in the life of the child. Concerns raised by students on any topic require empathy, not judgment. That's what it means to see the whole child and not their test scores. There has also been a narrative pushed by some that teachers' unions are inherently greedy and selfish. Bound by professional codes, teachers often can't speak up in their own defense, but I can. The teachers in this room here tonight are not here for themselves. I'm sure they'd much rather be home, beat up after a long year. Instead, they're here advocating for the best possible teaching and learning environments. They're here to put their students first, and they deserve better than having to buy their own pencils. This is far from the first time teachers have been thrown under the bus. I remember writing my very first letter to the editor of the Southwest Messenger in 2003. Other letters had brutally blamed teachers for low test scores when it was glaringly obvious even to a fourteen-year-old that the state's funding formula was to blame. Now, as the state threatens further cuts, the president of this board made a statement at last month's meeting that attempted to blame the potential for a future levy failure on the noise and hysteria. I disagree. If that happens, it won't be the teachers or the community to blame for speaking up. It will be the fault of this board for their mismanagement. Teachers have never been the cause of a funding crisis, but every time, they're the scapegoat. Meanwhile, they are the one ingredient that this district cannot survive without. They dedicate their lives to our kids and do the best with what they have, while the decisions of the state and of this board are beyond their control. I'm sure everybody in this room can think back to a teacher who impacted them. For me, there were many, but one in particular. She was my social studies teacher at Brook Park Middle School the year after 9/11, when our country was suddenly at war, which was very confusing for a thirteen, fourteen-year-old child. Yet, no matter how many teen Newsweek articles I wrote opinion papers about, I never could figure out how that teacher felt about any of it. That's as it should be, and that's as it still is. What I did know was that she cared about us. She made me want to show up and be my best. She made me smile even on the most difficult days. She didn't just help me learn, she helped me survive and thrive, and I was only one of her hundred and twenty students that year. You want our district to be a destination district? It all comes down to teachers. Imagine how many lives are touched by teachers in our district each year. That's why it infuriates me to see them scapegoated when they are literally, in reality, out here saving lives. What I'd like to see instead is a deep and genuine appreciation and support for our teachers. Listen to their needs and their experiences. A card or donuts for Teacher Appreciation Week is nice, but true support means showing up for them on all the days that they show up for our kids, and that is every single day.
Wow, how do I tell the board? A little differently. President Foso, Vice President DeAngelo Steele, members of the board, Mr. Banks, Mr. Garistady, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Megan Payne, that William Gordon Larmen. I'm a parent of an amazing sixth grader at his intermediate school. For those of you that do not know my background, I grew up as a conservative in Athens County, which is not exactly the most conservative county in the state. I'm a proud product of both public education, a public educator, and a Republican County Commissioner. Throughout my post-secondary education, I often encountered discrimination based on diversity of thought. I'm conservative in Athens County, that's discrimination. While studying at the Ohio University, I spoke before the university president regarding the discrimination I received in non-political science classes, merely because I was conservative, I did the same in law school. This board and its members, I think, are well on record that they want to encourage diversity of thought, and I thank you for that. There is nothing more diverse than thought than including and accepting neurodivergent viewpoints. Twice-exceptional learners provide so much value to a class. Also known as, and I will refer to them going forward, as 2E's. Twice-exceptional students are both gifted and have a learning disability. The Ohio Department of Education has been encouraging schools to stop letting 2E's slip between the cracks. In fact, the Ohio Board Association's Education Law Committee is winter meeting, which is entirely about twice-exceptional education. I will note that your advisory council was not a member of the committee and was not at that meeting. I was. Science and inexperience, for those of us that are 2E parents or 2E's themselves, and in my case, both, are not. That twice-exceptional learners are often diagnosed later in life or later in their education years. They're often seen as either not trying or unable to focus. They're labeled a bad behavior students. Let's keep it real, their giftedness often masters special ability, and their special ability often masters giftedness. I will say, our teachers have been great with acknowledging mine. Thank you, Mrs. Allford, for the note you gave here tonight, you had a great year. These students per vote provide unique perspectives in our world. Valuable insight and usually the ones who think outside of the box. 2E students are often eliminated from gifted programs in favor of well-schooled and well-behaved children. These are the students and children that grow to change our world. Famous 2E's include Helen Keller, Stephen Hawking, Mae Jackson, the first African-American woman in space, and many mathematicians, physicists, scientists, and engineers. Tom Holland, who my son is like, yeah, I'm like Spider-Man. Richard Branson, Simone Biles, Tim Tebow, and John Lennon, all had a learning disability. Some of history's great tributes have been neurodivergent 2E's, including Thomas Edison, Albert Einstein, Leonardo da Vinci, Marie Curie, and Thomas Paine. I think that's where mine came from. Those are the voices that change our world, and from what I've seen, you're silencing them in our district. I turn now to Ms. DeAngelo Steele's response to the student-led petition on change.org she published May 22, 2025. However, this response and this board stance, and assistance on joining this organization has shown me the exact opposite of wanting to encourage diversity of thought. First and foremost, this was a student-created petition. Ms. DeAngelo Steele's unthoughtful response actually stated, that's focused on supporting our students and the positive work being done. How about supporting that student's right for an opinion and thought? What message does this send to our neurodivergent student who took it upon themselves to try to participate in civil debate? It wasn't that they were opinion valued. Instead, the term hysteria is being lobbied around by our board in response to a student. Our schools are supposed to help our young people become productive members of society. Well, they were not, by giving them an education. Our society has clearly lost the art of civil debate, and this board in this situation is not helping bring it back. We're supposed to listen and respect all viewpoints. We don't have to like them, we don't have to agree with them, but we need to respect the others' right to have them. It's not hysteria when the very tenet of an organization will take our 2E's out of the gifted and general classrooms and put them in a special room merely because they have a special ability and that requires special needs. This is not going to benefit any of our students or our community. I urge this board to take more time before making these snap decisions about these organizations. Think about it from all angles. Some of us, think about all students and all voices. The hysteria you referenced isn't just the crazy emphasis. I am standing here a conservative and a libertarian, and I am telling you, some of us are raising exceptional children, and we are not going to go quietly into the night and let their light be dimmed or letting our voice be silenced. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on now, items for discussion. Anybody have anything, items for discussion?
One thing I'd like to discuss, and I wasn't sure if Garsette was going to be here or not, Mr. Garsette, for this conversation. I know Garsette and I have talked about this before, about having a board-led financial committee. That would be something more of like a budget review committee that meets twice a year. So if the board is okay with that, if that's something that we want to discuss, we can have an agenda at another meeting or so, that'd be great. But I think it'd be great to help with transparency, to have a board-led budget committee is something that this district hasn't done in a very long time, and it's something that I have been discussing with Mr. Garsette for a while. And I think it's beyond pastime to have something like this. My view, my thoughts on this would be to do something where it involves the board and members of the community, things of that nature. I know, Mr. Banks, you guys had a board financial committee, budget review committee in Worthington when you were there, and thought it went really well. And I appreciate your input on that as well, so that is something that I would like to discuss or other topics that we discuss.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was about to say, I can actually touch on that. Me and Hugh actually have been hitting this topic consistently for the past couple months in our meetings, and that is definitely something that is top of the priority list. We had pushed it back somewhat on getting it started because of Hugh helping with the advocacy down at the State House for federal funding. And so we just paused for a moment to allow for him to have the ability to focus on that. And at that time, that was very important for Hugh, to be able to go and speak on behalf of that matter. But that is something that me and Hugh do have a plan to bring forward on an agenda item. Hugh, is there anything else I missed for now?
I think the best course of action would be, I can come with some examples of some other districts that are around the area. Bring those four and have a conversation about them.
Yeah, but that agenda remains nothing.
Where's the community?
And, yeah, not to respond to all the shouting and everything, but. I think when I, I'll go back to what I said before too. I think it should be something that involves the community. So a board-led committee with community involvement, and there'll be an application process and things like that. I know that's what some other districts are doing. Garsette, it'd be great next month if you have that prepared for us.
That is correct. That is still be a huge plan, before I could answer, that it will be a board-led committee. I've not made any side decisions that that would be changed. So that is still going to happen. I actually do have something to say. And when I. And when I have to say something, and you know I gotta give a disclaimer, that means that I'm probably going to say some things right now that some is gonna like and some may not like. And all I'm gonna ask is for everyone to remain quiet while I speak, because I want everyone to hear what I have to say, because I think it's important. First, I've had the chance to process our last board meeting, which was May 19, and a chance to take a pause. And sometimes pausing is what I call is a good thing needed. And there is a couple things from that last board meeting that I do want to address. The first one, the use of the word segregated when describing a group of students in relation to disabilities, IEPs, or 504s. Although we have selected to explore another school board organization that chooses to use this word in their articles or statements, I am asking that we, as Southwestern board members, do not use this term in reference to our population of students. We all know the use of the term has a negative connotation to it. We are now decades ahead in time. We want to reframe from applying another population of individuals in this category. We, as the board, can do better. I am a part of a board, so you've noticed I said "we." We can do better. There was a statement around future levy failures. We are not at that point right now, talking about a levy. Doesn't mean I'm making no promises, y'all know I'm over finances now. We won't need one in the future. But let's change the narrative around that, okay? If we fail a levy in the future, we fail the levy together. We fail it together. It does not matter if the percentage to approve is one amount and the percentage that is majority is against. If it fails, we fail together. We all receive the same percentage, which is zero, if it fails. We are all in it together, okay? And if that is the outcome, we have to come together to determine what is the solution for our students. That is when we come together to determine the solution. We have a chance to change the narrative for Southwestern. And all I'm asking is that we start working to change that narrative, okay? And that is all the two areas I really had to hear on May 19's meeting.
Um, what was that? President Bosso?
Yes, just interrupting. So tonight on Agenda I M P, the Board of Education authorized our treasurer to issue a public notice regarding retire-rehire. In order to comply with the deadlines the Columbus Dispatch has, Ohio Revised Code, as well as the start of school, it may be necessary for us to modify our summer schedules in order to meet all of those deadlines. So if I could just review, our next meeting is June 25. That meeting, the primary purpose of that meeting is to close the books, so that's a financial meeting, but I'm sure it will have a full agenda. July 10, we have a meeting. That meeting typically is, primary use is for hiring. But in order to meet the Ohio Revised Code, we will need to have the notice issued in the Dispatch and then have a hearing. It is possible that if we have that hearing on July 28, and then the board could vote on those individuals on August 18, that we would meet those deadlines. And since two of the employees are bus drivers, that would put them on a bus for the start of school on the 20th of August. So I'll let you discuss that, but in short, it would entail adding a meeting on July 28 and August 18, and canceling a meeting on August 11 and August 25 in order to get those folks hired. Any member want to read that for me, to change those meeting dates? Do we have a second on that?
Second, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a little call for that?
Yes, Ms. Martindale? Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. DeAngelo Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Listkini?
Yeah.
Mr. Bosso?
Yes. Thank you, Randy. Moving on now, we're going to go into executive session. I recommend the Board of Education return to executive session in accordance with Policy 01662, Conference with an Attorney Regarding Pending and Immediate Court Action. Prepare for the conduct or review negotiations or bargaining sessions with the public employees. Can I get a motion to go to executive session? Thank you, Mrs. Martindale, can I get a second? Thank you, Ms. Listkini, can I get a little call?
Ms. Martindale? Ms. Listkini?
Yeah.
Ms. DeAngelo Steele?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Bosso?
Yes, everybody's more than welcome to stay. I don't know how long we'll be in there, but thank you for being here, have a great...